Morning, everyone. Got it? Okay. Morning, everyone. Welcome to Monday Meeting of V O C C. Our budget items. I see Health and Human Services is on the list. First one. Weren't you just here? Do you have an office here or something? You're always over here. At least a parking pass. Oh, interesting.
Hi, Gina James, Health and Human Services. These microphones are working. I can hear it. Yeah.
She turned. Should I? Commissioner Morrison, we can't find this hearing aid, so we turn those up.
It's good. You don't have to push it so close. Okay. So wait, you have, and there's extra copies up here if anyone's interested. We just wanted to give an update on the opioid settlement funds. We received an additional payment from the Johnson and Johnson or Janson settlement. So you see some updated numbers reflected down below. So total to date, we've received a little over 2.1 million in settlements. We anticipate some additional payments in July. So this will continue to be updated.
Court question. Who else might they sue? I mean, you say this, there may be additional settlements in the future.
I don't know. We just, we keep, yeah, we keep getting, there's another one in the works. We keep getting notices like, hey, there's more settlements coming.
Well, I'm thinking no one's going to be safe here from this lawsuit.
Yeah. Yeah, the Kroger one is the most recent that we've got notice about.
You know, you do have. I saw an email that I think Dr. Kirkpatrick sent out and, and the whole thing was on now he has patients that can't get their stuff through Costco. Costco isn't going to do this anymore. So there, there's another side to this too, that the people that really have the need are going to be struggling to get services. I mean, I get everybody sees this money coming in and starts going, you know, where's the key to unlock this thing, right?
Yeah.
But there is a side effect and it, and it does hurt people on the other side in, in getting some services.
Sure.
And that bothers me here.
Oh, yeah, that should be. And also when you think about it could take a while to discuss that. Anyhow, Dr. Kirkpatrick puts out occasionally a newsletter and there he actually tackles what most people don't tackle, which is defining what addiction is. And you'd think that's be pretty simple. No, the answer is you cut off my oxygen and you'll see me addicted real fast to oxygen and I'm going to need it. And so how do you define it? And how does that apply to, to the drug? If there's a drug you need for a specific purpose, maybe that qualifies. Anyhow, he goes through the end result. He's got a lot of elderly patients and they're on all kinds of drugs, including oxycodone type things. And he has the devil of a time trying to get those prescriptions filled in, or I should say the patients do.
Yeah. It just, it always has a side effect. People tend to look at the money side and saying, oh, this is a good thing. We got this to do. Well, it's not always a good thing because there are still people that, that it affects and our tendency is to.
But I think, but I think the history of the lawsuits was based on the idea that the companies said that it was not addictive and that was important to do pain relief and they ignored the science.
Yeah.
Because it was very profitable. That part of it is, is still very much legitimate. One of the biggest surprises I had in the last month or so was in a discussion of fentanyl from an emergency room doctor who pointed out fentanyl as a key ingredient used in anesthesia.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, that's, that's a pretty important plus. I didn't, I didn't realize it was, it was an anesthetic. So it's, it's about the proper usage and avoiding overuse. And, you know, that requires discipline. That requires professionals being on top of what their patients are being prescribed and asking the questions. Where, you know, what other, what other pills are you taking at the same time? So.
The, the narrative of the lawsuit is actually a bit too convenient. I had a pretty massive back operation in 98. I think it was 98 or 99 and I got prescribed Oxycontin for care after the operation. And the doctor said, it's very important that you maintain some semblance of pain relief. And if you get addicted, we'll take care of it. And turns out that I'm one of those people, I can take it or leave it. So I left it. And doesn't mean it didn't hurt. It hurt like the dickens. But my, my point being in, in the nineties, we knew all of this stuff is addictive. Stuff that makes you feel good is addictive. That pizza at Costco is still one of my major attractions when I go south. I mean, it goes back to how to define, define addiction. So that's why I think those arguments are often driven by the thought of. bust the kingpin of distribution and, and something. What we've done is we've actually penalized the people that have to buy the stuff. So they in turn get the money by committing more crime. So it may seem like we did something wonderful when we put the kingpin in jail, but what we did is we penalized everybody else around because now they're more vulnerable. The other one that's really interesting is because all of this stuff has to be done clandestinely. Imagine if you wanted to buy 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 a kilo of heroin. Maybe it's a block. I don't know what the size is. That's a bit harder to import than 10 grams of fentanyl. So as we press on heroin, we're pushing the fentanyl imports, same argument. And, and then you say, but it's killing the clientele. Well, that's the other clue. There's endless clientele and that's the problem. The dealer doesn't care. Oh, well, we'll get somebody else tomorrow. Lot of unintended consequences.
Could be a good argument for us.
Be a good discussion.
Good discussion. I, I just would throw out a thought on this and I don't. Sometimes I hate to even suggest these thoughts because I don't want people to think that this is what we're doing. But you know how we do rural? Where if you have a big project, we can, we can fund it and then, then pay it back year by year. You may just look at that. I mean, if we had a big project and we do something, could you do the same type of scenario with this? If you're going to get this, this amount of money over 17 years.
Yeah, I believe you can.
Yeah.
With this funding, but.
Yeah, particularly if we had to do something with the juvenile clinic. Maybe we, maybe we do a bond that'll actually build the thing or take care of it today and we pay it off with.
Yeah, that would, I think that would kind of address, because I agree with Commissioner Weber, it's not enough each year to really do too much. But if you could take a cumulative and get something bigger done and then just pay it off over time, that could make more sense.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll look more into that.
So on a, on a 20-year bond, the interest is about equal to the principal?
Yeah, keep that in mind as well.
That's the downside of borrowing. When you, when you do a 20-year bond, the interest you pay by the end of the 20 years is about equal to what you borrowed. Some, some huge, some huge portion.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the, the, you, you've got the purchasing power of inflation involved in there, which is kind of an issue. But if we had approximately 200,000 a year, that means we could probably get a four million bond, four million dollar bond and break even roughly. That might be enough to do something.
And we, and we've just ventured into doing math in public, right? We've just ventured, ventured into doing math in public and that's always, that's always a danger for us.
Yeah, there is, there is that. Yeah.
Okay.
Little more work to do.
Yep.
Don't forget the, what if the government decides they're not going to give us these payments?
Well, that's why we have these meetings. It's good discussion.
Yep. Okay, more to come on that. Just a couple other quick updates. We, I met with the Veterans Advisory Board last week. I'll be working with Kelly to look at a work session time. I think they'd like to come and, and connect with the board a little bit. They want to revisit their recommendation for funding for the veterans' stand down. And they also have been working on some recommendations for the policies and procedures, sort of recommending to increase a lot of the assistance limits. So once they get a little bit closer with that, then we'll bring that to the board as well for review. So just a heads up on that item.
I think I mentioned to you, but I, I don't, because of OTMA, these two gentlemen may not know that. Apparently a lot of senior transportation gets handled by the tribes.
They have a program, yeah.
Yeah. And so I sent an email to Alyssa Fine, who represents the tribes on the Board of Health, asking her if she saw any synergies in between funding for more more transportation services for the veterans. It, it just, there's a set of people who have a hard time with going to the doctor's appointments or the VA hospital. Rather than create more welfare of any kind, I'd rather take care of a problem that is easily identifiable.
Yeah, that could be something to look at.
Some, some historians might point out the irony of the Indian tribes helping to get veterans' medical care based on the history in this country of the role of the military. So that'd be interesting.
Another item, there's a couple of amendments that we're working on. There's a couple with our criminal justice treatment account funding. That's, that state contract was a two-year contract. We're just going into the second year of that. The providers were one-year contracts, so we're working on amendments with those providers to add funding for the second year. So that will be contract amendments with Family Health Center and Columbia Wellness to continue providing those. It's primarily UAs and outpatient treatment. They've also started doing a little bit of inpatient residential treatment with CJTA funding as well. So, and the numbers are going up a little bit. It kind of ties with drug court. And so we're seeing drug court numbers have gone up and so our numbers are going up too. So we'll see those coming to the board in the next few weeks. And then we have re.
There was an issue with drug court not that long ago, as a result of the Blake law change. And we still only have Superior Court Drug Court, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Another amendment that we've received from the state is to our Consolidated Homeless Grant, the CHG. This is the one that includes the HIN funding, the Housing and Essential Needs funding. So we've received an amendment that does a couple of things. They've added additional HIN funding for the second year of the contract. And that was a result of some miscalculation they did for our HIN budget. We saw an amendment earlier this year that added funding to this current year because of that as well. So now they're adding the funding for the second year to correct that. We also.
Gina, on, on that, are they are they showing that there are increased numbers of individuals that qualify for HIN? Or is it just a miscalculation of the program?
It was just a miscalculation.
So the, the number of folks needing that kind of homeless assistance is stabilized?
You know, I'm not sure. We have limited access to see who's like HIN eligible across the board. We just tend to hear about folks who are HIN eligible and currently homeless. So I'm not sure if there's been an increase in that eligibility or if it's stabilized. I might be able to find some information on that though. For the potential audience, if we have any HIN Housing Essential Needs, and that includes what things? Housing and Essential Needs. So it includes a couple of things. If you're HIN eligible, then the state, DSHS, has found that you're unable to work for a period of 90 days or more. And then you can qualify for the HIN program that can provide some essential needs items. So like laundry soap, shampoo, those types of things. And if you're currently homeless, you may also be able to access housing assistance. And that's the piece, you know, that we're involved in. And we pass the funds to Lower Columbia CAP to help with that. So they can help individuals find and get into housing. And the HIN funding can help to pay for their rent for, while they're HIN eligible. They have to complete their program requirements through DSHS. They have case management meetings and they have to be keeping up on. That's part of keeping their HIN eligibility is completing those things. And it oftentimes includes activities that work towards either getting back to work or if they are found to be permanently disabled, then to access that type of assistance that way.
And who's the administrator?
DSHS is the overall HIN program. They operate that program. We're involved with the housing piece with CAP. So CAP will do the, just the housing piece to help individuals get into housing and assistance with the rent.
For the most part, you're just to pass through?
For that, yeah, for that piece. And their eligibility, yeah, this, the state holds their eligibility for that piece. So. Yeah.
It's just the one I keep getting the docu-sign for?
Yes.
When they're kind of passing through some of the state, once while it'll just, you need to sign this document and I'll look at it and I'll see Gina and I said, have we talked about this? And she goes, no.
I know.
Sometimes they send them directly. They don't go through. So.
Yeah.
I just deleted another one this morning until it actually comes to us.
Yeah, sometimes they come to us first and then once we talk about it or it comes to a Tuesday meeting, then we'll pass it, push it through. And other times that they just send it directly. And I don't know when they do that, so I apologize.
Then some people think they think that you're in charge.
Some people are misinformed.
Yeah.
Yep. So Gina, can, do you have enough information to know of the folks that participate in the Hope Village program in the city of Longview? Most of them are multiple disabled, long-term unemployed, not able to work. Are those the type of folks that qualify for HIN?
There are some individuals that I know have been eligible for HIN that were currently staying at Hope Village and were able to transition out of Hope Village into housing because of the HIN assistance.
So, so part, part of what Hope Village does is link them up with HIN if they're eligible, if they're on the list or?
Yeah, I believe so. I could reach out to their program coordinator to learn more. I'm not sure of, of the whole population, how many are HIN eligible.
So, so of so that in the HIN program, you mentioned that the clients have to follow certain requirements. Is treatment part of the required, the requirements from the state to get the, those benefits?
It could be. So if that's something that is preventing someone from working, it could be, treatment could be a component of that requirement.
That means it's not a requirement.
It, it, it can be if treatment isn't, if substance is an issue that the person is having that's keeping them from working, then they're, they're, to keep their HIN eligibility, they may be required to complete treatment or be, be attending treatment regularly. That could be a component if substance use is identified on their.
Those are pretty soft answers.
Well, I just don't want to give it, it, it doesn't mean that's applicable to everybody on HIN. And so.
So I, I think you're saying there may be some people for whom there is no requirement to do anything along these lines. And there's another set of people for whom there is a requirement.
I think if someone is using substances, I believe it, it would be a requirement. Yeah.
And Dennis, you mentioned most people are handicapped. Village. I, I haven't seen those numbers.
Yeah, well, almost, almost by definition, the chronically homeless have multiple disabilities. That could include mental, mental health, as well as substance abuse or PTSD or, or some other medical conditions.
Yeah, I have a little trouble when things are so broad that. I mean, could someone with a speech problem qualify? I mean, it is an impediment to proper employment. Anyhow.
Yeah.
Yet you make it work.
Bad hearing too.
So in addition.
You're lucky you're not a horse.
In addition to the HIN funding, they're also adding some funds in a couple other categories. When the state finished their budget process and the state budget was approved, there was some additional funding, additional state funding allocated into some of these categories. So they're adding that funding in as well. So the total amendment is about 1.3 million dollars. Some of that funding that they're adding is for local document recording fee support. And that's funding that is the most flexible in the sense that they're saying you can use this funding the same way you use your local document recording fees. And so we could look at some projects. Like I know we have a workshop coming up with Habitat, for example. So there might be some opportunities with this funding to be able to utilize for projects like that. So that's included in here as well. requirement.
That means it's not a requirement.
It, it could, it can be if treatment isn't, if substance is an issue that the person is having that's keeping them from working. Then they're, they're, to keep their HIN eligibility, they may be required to complete treatment or be, be attending treatment regularly. That could be a component if substance use is identified on their-
Those are pretty soft answers.
I just don't want to give, it, it doesn't mean that's applicable to everybody on HIN. And so-
So I, I think you're saying there may be some people for whom there is no requirement to do anything along these lines, and there's another set of people for whom there is a requirement.
I think if someone is using substances, I believe it, it would be a requirement.
And Dennis, you mentioned most people are handicapped Village. I, I haven't seen those numbers.
Yeah, well, a- almost, almost by definition, the chronically homeless have multiple disabilities. That could include mental, mental health, as well as substance abuse or PTSD or, or some other medical conditions.
Yeah, I have a little trouble when things are so broad that I mean, could someone with a speech problem qualify? I mean, it is an impediment to proper employment. Anyhow.
Yet you make it work.
Bad hearing, too.
So in addition-
You're lucky you're not a horse.
In addition to the HIN funding, they're also adding some funds in a couple other categories. When the state finished their budget process and the state budget was approved, there was some additional funding, additional state funding allocated into some of these categories. So they're adding that funding in as well. So the total amendment is about one point three million dollars. Some of that funding that they're adding is for local document recording fee support. And that's funding that is the most flexible in the sense that they're saying you can use this funding the same way you use your local document recording fees. And so we could look at some projects. Like I know we have a workshop coming up with Habitat, for example. So there might be some opportunities with this funding to be able to utilize for projects like that. So that's included in here as well.
No, i- it seems like we, we tend to explore new programs. New in the sense of new to the funding regime. But we very seldom eliminate back programs. Or another way of looking at this would be, do we have numbers that show the per capita expenditure over the years of all these programs? Because my impression is that we continue on an inexorable paths path of growing growing the HHS budget, the welfare budget, let's say, beyond the growth of other factors. But that's just an impression I have.
Yeah, I mean, we have seen this funding increase over the years. You know, obviously, we saw it through COVID and then the state has been allocating funding towards these types of activities more so recently than in years past.
The reason we want to be careful there is it doesn't take much to argue that if you tax something, you, you depress it or tend to eliminate it. And if you subsidize it, you tend to grow it. And I think we see that just in spades when you look at large numbers, you just take a look at society as a whole. We tax income and we subsidize all kinds of other things that are not productive per se. So it would be really cool if over the years we had an analysis, and I think that would likely fall on HHS. It just says, our per capita expenditure has gone above or below what you might expect if you take factors of inflation and population count into account.
Okay. Maybe we can-
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, maybe we can connect a little bit more and figure out what we can see what we can come up with.
We'll probably see these contract amendments in the next couple of weeks, two, three weeks?
Yes.
Okay, you're just preparing us.
Yes, and let me know if you have any questions later on, a couple of days from now or what have you, let me know. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, that was quite a bit.
I see assessor.
Emily, did you realize when you took the job that it'd be a hopeless job to explain to people how how the taxing works?
I had no idea. Good morning, Kathy Funt Baxter, Finance Director. So we'll start on the assessors with going over their financials. So the revenue is the first chart that's up there. And as far, they have very little revenue that comes into the general fund for the assessors department. They have goods and services budget of twenty four thousand and fifty dollars. And they have a favorable category for that right now. It's above what they received prior year.
Can I clarify real quick?
Yes.
Just as a reminder, we don't actually bring in revenue. This is basically a pass through. This is recording fees that we collect for people going on like current use programs. So this is just them paying a recording fee. And then that expense follows through in my other line on my budget. It just, it's a pass through.
And then other financing sources has a, a negative revenue. And this is a result of an entry that the auditor's office has recorded for the financial reporting related to one of the Gaspys. And it's called subscription-based IT arrangements. And so this is an entry that is recorded in January to reverse the previous financials. And we won't be making an entry again until December for 2024. So it will show as a negative for right now. We're just, we're asking them to look at it just to make sure that it's cor- correct. And this is, I believe it is, but we won't see an offset to this until December. Are there any other questions on revenue? Like I said, they don't really have anything significant on revenue.
I'm not sure I heard you properly. So on personnel, we're spending faster than we should be?
I was talking about revenue. So you want to go to expenses?
You, you, you haven't moved to, no, I moved. Yeah.
Okay.
The numbers were too small on the revenue.
I'm on expenses. And so for personnel, we are currently at no, we're at, actually, our target based upon the, the time period this is year-to-date. Our target would be eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. And we're at eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars currently.
Oh, yeah, it's the diamond thing I-
Yeah, the diamond is that we're above, we're above what they were last year at the same time period. And that's primarily due to new contracts, new collective bargaining contracts and the colas that have been processed in 2024. Other than that, I don't really believe there's anything. And then again, the corresponding on the revenue side for the subscription-based IT arrangements. We also have a capital expenditure that shows up as negative. And that's the same journal entry related to reversing of twenty-three's transactions that was booked by the auditors for the financial reporting. So.
So it was a change they made to bring it into accounting standards?
Right, right.
You see those on financial reports all the time.
And then we don't book anything for twenty-four until December. So or really January of next year, probably. And then the FTEs, I marked those through on your report. We discovered we're using PeopleSoft to pull in this data. And PeopleSoft is not completely updated on everyone's FTE. So you have a position and you put in a most, we have several positions for particularly this department and other departments that have a zero on the FTE. So they're skewing the numbers. And so we're going to have maintenance done to correct the FTE data set in our HR system. So until we get that done, our FTE numbers are not right.
So just to be sure, are the numbers right? This is through May inclusive?
This is through May, yes. These numbers were actually pulled June, June tenth, I believe.
So unfortunately, I was at a conference last week and didn't see this until this morning, or I would have touched base with Kathy. So some of it was kind of last minute me going, that number's not right. The way I look at my budget, just to give you a different perspective than what Kathy's reports look like. So I take my whole budget, I take out my labor bucket, because that's a predetermined amount that is not something I manage. And then I take out my IT budget and that gives me the amount I have control over for the year. So with that, it left me two hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. At the current time when I run the report this morning, I had spent fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and six, which represents about twenty-one point six percent of my budget for the year. I do have a couple bigger expenses that come later in the year, such as my postage and attorney fees. But at this point, I'm sitting about twenty-two percent of my budget for the year of what I control.
And that's the budget you use for your attorneys?
Is included in there.
How are we doing in that area?
We have been really slow right now. We will be ramping up with litigation in the next couple of months. So there will be a more expense there that is not accounted for at this time, but we shall see. We're using the new attorney, so we'll see how it goes.
So are the larger taxpayer payers still challenging your assessments and?
They will always.
Cost of doing business for them.
Either that or they get to meet Uncle Luigi.
So it's been about a year, year and a half or so since the, your, your office has been reorganized? Downstairs, I can't remember, it may be longer ago than that.
Are you talking about spatially or employment-wise?
Well, spatially, where, where you-
Spatially, that's going very well. I wouldn't say that it's a little bit harder to manage two different floors. You have to make a priority to make sure you go down and spend time with the employees on the lower level. But spatially, everybody's a lot happier not being on top of each other, so.
Did you combine that decision with HHS and their health insurance and exercise programs?
No, but I should get credit for the exercises on. I did bring a couple stats for you guys if you wanted to hear.
I'm complete on the financials. I, I don't, I don't see anything that needs to be alerted.
And I would have alerted you if I thought something needed to be alerted.
I believe you would.
Just as a quick update for the office, we are wrapping up Reval Six. Reval Six consisted of about twelve thousand, five hundred parcels. So that's pretty good. We're currently working on new construction and I don't have the numbers, but we have quite a bit of new construction this year. So they're plugging away at that. As far as appeals go, we had a hundred and forty-six appeals this year. The year prior was two hundred and ninety, so that's a pretty decent decrease in appeals. Other than that, we're happy and plugging along, doing our jobs. So do you guys have any questions?
I'd be curious at some point seeing the statistics of the appeals. It always it's just trying to figure out, are we doing the right thing assessing? And we only really can know that sometimes when a statistic will view. You mentioned one statistic there, we have fewer appeals now than, than before. But of those appeals, how many are successful and what kind of percentage adjustments?
I have those numbers for you. So out of a hundred and forty-six appeals this year, thirty, thirty-eight of them were withdrawn. Sixty-two of them were stipulated, which means we took a look at it and agreed there was an adjustment that should be made. And so we made the adjustment and forty-five of them we took to the board. So very few of them-
Could you repeat the last category?
The last one is we took to the board, so-
The Board of Equalization.
The Board of Equalization. So forty-five of them, we said, no, our number is correct and we're going to take it to the board. The sixty-two of them, we looked at and made adjustments. And then thirty-eight of them, we looked at, explained it to the people, and then they withdrew.
And the appeals board supported you all the way, or?
I don't think that, I don't think that we lost any this year. Typically, if we are ready to go to the board, we have the documents and the data to support our value. We have seen a little bit of an uptick in appeals of the BOE's decision to the BTA. Which we just used the same data. So other than attending the hearing, it's not a lot of additional work for the staff, so that's fine.
So they, the Board of Equalization decisions can be appealed to whom?
They get appealed to the State Board of Tax Appeals, so.
State Board of Tax Appeals, so.
And the one number still missing would be, I, I went to the Board of Equalization. I had an assessment of a hundred dollars and I thought it should be eighty. And the board decided it is ninety, so that would be a ten percent adjustment. That ten percent is the number I'm really looking for. I'm trying to figure out how large the margin, I'll call it of error, but I'm not sure what the right margin of discrepancy is between the assessment and the final assessment after investigation.
With us making a recommended value or the BOE making an adjustment?
Now that you bring it up, I buy both.
So I would have to pull the numbers on our stipulated values, because that's where we're changing the value. Rarely, we sometimes do have a situation where we say, okay, we looked into it. We think this is the correct number. The person does not agree, so we cannot stipulate. So then we go to the BOE and we have a recommended value. I can get those numbers for you. There, this year, I don't believe there was a single time where the board did not find either for what our assessed value was or what our recommended value was.
It, it is useful, every now and then you will bump into something that is unusually off. Like if, if there was a discrepancy of five percent, I wouldn't think too much of it. If there were a discrepancy of twenty-eight percent, I'd be like, there's something weird here.
Usually, if we're making an adjustment, there was something that we did not have knowledge of that the taxpayer came forward and said, hey, you know, my basement has no finishings or my house flooded or it burnt down, or something that we weren't aware of and will make an adjustment for that.
Just seeing the distribution would be helpful, like.
I can look into it.
The, the, the larger number is very few actually appeal.
Right, we-
The vast majority, you're, you're close to ninety-eight percent, people accept what they get in the mail.
When, when you have fifty-eight thousand parcels or whatever and you have a hundred and forty-six appeals, that's pretty good. And the state, across the state, saw a pretty big uptick in appeals this year. I think Watcomb County had like eighteen hundred appeals. So a lot of the counties are trying to figure out how to add that to their workload. And we were very blessed this year, so.
I think you explained before, the state has a value of what they think property is worth in Calhoun. And they kind of take what we do assessment and I think we're in the nineties, we're pretty close to-
So they audit me, right.
Yeah, do they get granular to the point of auditing these type of things?
They pretty much audit everything that the state can audit.
And if they disagree with the adjustment we make, what happens? Or they don't disagree?
They wouldn't, they wouldn't look at it like that.
Okay.
And the way they audit our values is they look at the assessed value that's on a property compared to the sale price. So they're pulling all the sales and looking at what the assessed value to sale price is. And we've been running about ninety-two to ninety-three percent, meaning we're a little low. I think this year I was at eighty-nine percent. I was trying to be a little conservative and got a little too conservative on it. But that's probably why we had less appeals is the values were a little low, so.
But if we were down like sixty-seven percent or sixty or seventy, the state's going to say something.
Yeah, I, I would be having some conversations with the state.
I just want to say, we, we always need to be careful on how we of the manner, not the manner, the, the issues we conclude. Like if we had fifty thousand parcels and we only got a hundred and fifty complaints, we are inclined to think that that means we're doing a good job. It may be, more likely is, but it isn't necessarily true. Because if you were all of a sudden to have as a policy, you go to the assessor's office to complain and you'll give them at least three percent decrease in the assessment, you will probably find that those people complaining rise. So our actions do create the demand for one form or another.
Any other questions?
I was just trying to express that we just can't give sign anything. I mean, if we wanted to be very lenient and say, now we're going, going, why are we going to assess you fifty percent? We couldn't do that. We'd get hammered.
So let's say I went completely rogue and I decided I was gonna shoot for fifty percent. It would work for one year. People would be very happy. And then when they got their tax bills, they would realize their taxes didn't change at all. And then they would think there was some kind of mischief about.
Because it really works on a dollar amount, so it sort of adjusts the the rate, basically.
Yeah, the rate would just double and their taxes would stay the same.
Just to repeat, the school levies, they actually go up and down with the assessment. That is to say, if the levy is one point five percent, say, or something like a dollar fifty, let's say. It's the dollar fifty per thousand and it's a dollar and a half out of a five hundred thousand dollar house. It just got reassessed to six hundred, pays another twenty percent toward the levy.
So the levy is set, just like your guys' budget, at a specific dollar amount. So it does not matter if your assessed value goes up or down. They're not gonna collect any more money. It's not rate based.
A bond off then?
It's it's just a dollar amount, just like you guys. So they're not, I mean, if their assessed value went up significantly compared to somebody else's or everybody else's assessed value, theirs could go up. But in general, that that rate is derived from the levy amount that's passed divided by the total assessed value in the district to get the rate.
So when they when they give you that, they're really looking for a dollar amount. And at what we know now, it would be a levy rate of that, but it's really just an estimate.
Yeah, we actually talked.
Approving or you reject the dollar amount, the levy rate is gonna reflect off of assessed values.
We actually talked about that at the conference last year, that we would be in support of legislation that changes the requirements for the school levies and the levies on the ballots, because they're required to put an estimated rate on there. It's their estimation of a rate and they're trying to guarantee that and they can't guarantee it. And so we would be more in favor of them saying, this is what we collected last year. This is what we're wanting to collect this year.
That would probably be more understandable to people.
Because, well, and they'll say, okay, we're gonna be a dollar fifty. Well, a dollar fifty last year and a dollar fifty this year, it might look like it's the same to the taxpayer, but they're they could be paying significantly more this year. I think there could just be better transparency on how.
It's interesting trying to explain that to folks, because they'll complain about when the levy rate went up and say, well, your levy rate can go all kinds of ways, because it's really just a reflection of what you dollar amount you.
Right, and if the housing market falls off a cliff, their levy rates are gonna go up like crazy, so they still have to collect the same.
Our houses worth less than our luxury rate when it appears, well, it's. It's kind of apples and oranges if you understand what you're looking at. Does does that apply to all of the levy rates, like a fire district or a diking district and all that?
Once you, once it's past what you guys are gonna collect, that gets collected regardless of what the assessed values do. It's basically a contract between you and the taxpayers, saying this is how much needs to get paid.
In a changing environment, that seems like it's pretty hard to manage. So at the end of the year, you may have collected more or less than the money you had hoped for.
Correct, and and they do adjustments. So when you guys see like a refund levy option on your paperwork, when you're doing budget stuff, that's accounting for money that could have been left on the table. So let's say we put a whole bunch of seniors on a program and you don't get to collect the money you thought you were gonna collect that year. We can make it right the next year.
Yeah, but my question was strictly from the viewpoint of, let's say, the school. I wanted to collect a million dollars. At the end of the year, did I collect a million or slightly less or slightly more?
It should be pretty close, and if you didn't get your million, you'll get to collect a little bit more next year to make up for what you missed this year.
You do that, okay. On the other side also, if you didn't, if you got too much, you pay it back the next year.
Well, you wouldn't get too much, because we're not gonna do that.
That's a matter of opinion, right? For some.
Well, actually, it would be what Deborah does, so. She collects the money.
So so I know from experience that the the special levies do end up making a big difference. If there are new levies or if if a property owner lives in a couple of different taxing districts that both run levies that pass, then all of a sudden, it's it's a big jump up. And I think I think they with all the new school remodeling in Kelso on top of all of the District Two fire stations being built. That's been a double double whammy for for the taxpayers in Kelso. That was a big jump. Usually, people are okay with the school levies. I mean, generally, those pass pretty well, but then all of a sudden, everybody needs fire stations and fire service. So that became a big a big hit.
Yep, what districts you are in makes a big difference.
So just to make it crystal clear, if the assessed value in the county, let's say you had done a fifty percent to market, say the market didn't change. Next year, you went to a hundred percent of the market. The 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 taxes collected would be identical. And there are no holes in there where some, because everybody thinks the property assessment went up, so I'm I'm getting screwed in some way.
Yeah, the the your assessed value is only determining your percentage of the overall pie. And your percentage would stay the same. Your dollar amount would change, so.
That that's where I think I like your argument that, hey, we collected this last year. We've been approved it. Or we're gonna collect this this year, so it's gonna affect your taxes this way and stay out of the 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 rate type thing, because that can get real confusing.
I like the transparency behind it. And that's what I've expressed to districts when they're going out for levies is to use that narrative, because I think people understand it better. And there's a lot of nuances that come with the levies, right? So if I say I'm going out for a replacement levy and you're replacing a three million dollar levy with a six million dollar levy, that that's like, well, I'm gonna replace my Honda with a Maserati. It's not really a replacement. That's an upgrade.
So the typical complaint is everybody's property tax has gone up.
Well, very few people come in and complain when they go down. It does happen, though, but very few.
It didn't go down fast enough or largely enough. Anyhow, so if if the property tax goes up and up, I hear people complaining that their property tax it went up by factor of two and all that kind of stuff. How do I answer them with the one percent cap on property?
Well, so you get one percent plus new construction is how much taxes can go up. There is no cap. However, that's not taking into account your fire districts and your school districts and all the other excess levies that got voted in that can increase.
So so the answer is always the the levies. If the levies didn't change from one year to the next, that is, it was a three year levy. The the first year and the second year would be identical then, except for the one percent growth?
If if levies stay the same, your taxes would not go up. If budgets go up, they have to be paid for, so the taxes have to go up. If, let's say, every taxing district reduced the amount they wanna collect, the taxes would go down, even if the assessed values go up.
So we really have a bigger effect on what you're gonna pay through your properties by our budget than by any assessment. Yeah, so. You just need to be frugal with our budget, right?
Well, and of course, the commissioners can always play with levy shifts. That makes a difference in some people. Taxes generally go up if the shift happens to the general fund, because everybody pays the general fund, so.
Actually, so taxes went up for the people in the county when you guys stopped shifting.
Went back to where where it should have been.
Because when you shift from the roads to general fund, you're spreading the dollar amount to be collected over more people. Kind of a tricky little booger.
No, good conversation.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I know IT had a has a deal on the agenda, so they're gonna take care of that there. So we're right, pretty good time. Let me run a real quick, miss ladies, before we get into agenda items, because it came to my attention this this morning. We had a we had received applications for Board of Health and I acted on the ones that I had received. We got to the point where I didn't see we were gonna get anymore and late last week I I acted on those. And now we we got a call from an existing one that said she had an interest in being re-deal, but never put in an application. So I'm gonna stick with what I've done, because those are what I've received. But I'm just making you guys aware if you have any different approach you wanna take with it.
I'm okay with what you've done.
Move forward. Under Agenda Review Items, I see Juvenile. George.
Morning, George Moya, Court, I was gonna say Court Services Manager, but that's not my title anymore. Juvenile Court Administrator. Commissioners, before you, it's just a workshop for a personal services agreement. This agreement is with a psychologist to perform psychological evaluation on potential employees for our Youth Services Center.
That's. That looks like number ten on our new new deal with, is it SHIELD Assessments?
Yes, and it's formerly Pedican Associates. We used to do business with Pedican Associates. We reached the point where we're reaching that max for, I believe, is a twenty five hundred dollar per calendar year without a personal services agreement. So we're at that mark now, where we need to have a personal services agreement in order to conduct the psychological evaluations.
This is something we we we've done and we still do. We're just changing the the contract to fit how.
Correct, because we're gonna exceed the twenty five hundred in a calendar year. And and this is pretty much a trickle down effect from the positions that are open and the need to hire.
So going from a a calendar commitment to a a commitment to like three eighty five per assessment in twenty four and four sixty five per assessment.
The three eighty five, they're gonna honor for all this year and continue to honor that. It will change by twenty twenty four to the amount listed.
So we've basically just taken the cap off? If we if the contracts had it, it was like three eighty five per deal with a cap of twenty five hundred per year? Is that, am I understanding that right?
Well, the old one, we were just paying per use and it's still, it would still be that. It's per use for three eighty five up until December thirty first of this year. By twenty twenty four, it will increase to four sixty five if we continue to have use for them.
So where did twenty five hundred cap come from then?
Oh, no, that that's the per auditor, county auditor. In order to have, in order to conduct business, if we exceed twenty five hundred dollars, we need to have a personal services agreement. That that's the. Yeah, my apology.
I got it.
So this is actually the first time we've seen it.
This is the first time you've seen it, because normally we stay under the cap of twenty five hundred dollars.
So the increase from three eighty five to four sixty five percentage wise is huge. What's what's the story there?
I I'm assuming they're gonna quote like what everyone is quoting, just inflation, cost of business. I I don't have a true answer for that, Commissioner.
So we we would generally gauge that against other people who want, who who would like the agreement? Do we have other other agencies that would like to have have the job?
They're difficult to find. They they are quite difficult to find. This is, I think, our third provider that we've worked with in the past five years.
So could you be far more explicit? You you have tried to find some and can't, and and there are no suitable respondents?
Correct, in the area.
In the area, meaning location wise?
Location wise, right. And these are now being conducted through, my understanding is they're being conducted through a Zoom platform. You know, they they get the psychological assessment essentially through an email and they get to answer that. And then once they answer that, then they go and meet with the psychologist and talk about those questions and and try to gauge more from the individual.
In twenty twenty three, how much did we spend with this outfit?
In twenty twenty three? I can tell you that in twenty twenty three, we had nine evaluations conducted.
So if I take nine times three eighty five, that's that's what I'm looking for?
Correct.
Yeah, it's not a lot of money.
It's not, and when we use these psychological evaluations, we tend to forward people to the psychologist if we think they are gonna be the ideal candidate. We don't just, you know, every applicant, we don't just send them to get a psychologist assessment, so. These are mainly for the people that we really think we we'd like to hire.
The the end result, oh, this is pre-employment.
Pre-employment, yes.
You have statistics? Have they been successful?
I don't have statistics, but I am polling other juvenile courts around the state. If they are, how many of them are conducting psychological assessments? We also do polygraph assessments. And I I can only assume that the verdict is probably fifty fifty. I mean, these are just assessments. They're tools. Ultimately, you can pass all of that and still be a liability to the county. You know, you can have your degree, you can have the polygraph, you can have the psych uh psyche valve, all come clean. You get hired and there's still no guarantee, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, understood.
So George, you've had a number of longstanding vacancies in the department, right?
We have, and I believe the number now is still four full-time positions.
That are that are vacant.
That are vacant.
But then you're the number of clients, guests, don't wanna call them inmates, but they're they're down, though. I mean, it's been a while since you've been at full capacity.
Right, and it's it continues to fluctuate from one week to the next, you know, I.
But you're still not getting much more in twelve fifteen.
Oh, we reached up to twenty five. So la I wanna say last, if not last, the week before that, we had ten. I think it was ten detention intakes all in over the weekend. So you get a group of individuals that are participating in you you know, some activities that maybe seem illegal and you get all four of them and all four get arrested. And then a few warrants come in and a few bond revocations come in from parents saying, you know. And then a few warrants come in and a few bond revocations come in from parents saying, you know, I've had it with with the behavior, I'm revoking your bond and you're going right back to detention. So it they just fluctuate. It's really hard to to pin down an actual number, but I can tell you that the trends are going a little bit up based on my statistics.
So I am still curious about the process. It sounds interesting to me. So am I to am I to infer that you had a bunch of applicants, you down-selected them, and then you sent them through this process and that down-selects them again? Okay, and the psychological profile you're looking for, is that something you define?
No, that a psychologist, they what they do, they have predetermined, I guess, examinations, the psychologist. So they may use, let's say, a certain assessment that they use. It's maybe a national assessment that it's a best practice to determine the applicant based on the type of job they're gonna do. Mostly, these are for law enforcement type of of applicants, correctional law enforcement applicants. So they're looking at 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 it from that point of view. So they have to take this assessment based on what they're gonna be doing for for the job as part of their job description and make an assessment to say, well, they're well-suited or not well-suited for this job based on maybe trauma. We've received many that states, you know, based on their trauma, going into a lockdown facility where youth are expressing their trauma, may incite more trauma to them as as the employee.
Okay, thank you. So the increase in the the number of beds being used is that all from within Calhoun County? I know we serve several other counties, but the numbers are mostly an increase locally.
Mostly locally, yeah. We we, I mean, we're on the IFRS corridor, so we get a lot of youth from different counties as well. We just had recently one from King County. Out here. So we get them from everywhere, essentially.
And full capacity is how many?
For for our beds?
Yeah.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two, okay. Because we have been discussing how to make better use of the empty space.
We have, we're still in the works with that, and I know Commissioner Dolls involved with that and as I am, and Judge Hahn. Yes.
Thank you.
So I got a couple retiring commissioners, if they're looking for part-time work and. Do I get a chance to look at that psych eval?
Sir, if you pass the psychological evaluation and a polygraph will take you.
I can assure you I'd fail.
Which part?
Bear the rod kind of part.
And to be honest, I've had 35 years working with adolescents. I'm I'm good.
You know, aside from that, we also have a physical agility test. So I'm not insinuating anything. I'm just saying you may wanna prepare for that.
If you can make it a table tennis thing.
You know.
You're on.
Yeah. That'd be a good idea.
Your man.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Good morning, Deborah Gardner, Calhoun County Treasurer. Tomorrow on the consent agenda, we have the Calhoun County debt policy on there. This is a policy that was one of the policies needing to be updated. And it is in the RCW that this is to be reviewed and approved by the Finance Committee. We have processed this through the Finance Committee and we've also sent it on to our Bond Council that also approved this policy. So this is on there for tomorrow. If you have any questions regarding the policy, I'm happy to answer them.
Any major changes?
There's. Our our debt policy before didn't have a whole lot of instruction in there. I mean, it talks about all the different kinds of debt and the the practice, the approval process. So it's just putting it down, making it clear to county departments if they are going out for debt, you know, how to handle that. It also has a post-compliance section to it, so there's things that we need to do after the bond. Arbitrage arbitrage compliance, documents to the federal government, you know, different types of things that it states in there that we need to make sure we're following the these procedures. So it gives us a lot more instruction on how to move forward with debt.
And you're not, you're talking about more than just bond issues, but the other kinds of debt like credit card usage of.
This this doesn't have the credit card. This is for debt, bond debt issuance. And so any, you know, anything, we we ask in here, it also talks about if there is debt, to come to the Finance Com- Hall Committee, because we have fine, we have the auditor, treasurer, Chair of the Board and our Finance Director there. So we have all the financial people to talk about it and try to find the best way to move forward.
So one of the one of the types of debts, it it debt instruments the policy allows is for revenue bonds, where the bonds are paid off not by by the revenues that are collected by utilities particularly.
Correct.
When the county made the decision to buy the landfill, they opted not to use revenue bonds, but general obligation bonds guaranteed by the property taxes. We're still paying it off with revenues generated by the utility, but it's guaranteed. What's what's the difference or what's the advantage of going with a general obligation bond as opposed to a revenue bond? Do you, or or do you know?
Well, when back when they decided that, I wasn't involved in that. I think when, if you're going out for revenue bond, you have to show that, you know, the revenues are gonna cover that that debt and maybe at the time they, you know, I don't know what the decision was at that point, but.
Would the interest rates be a little bit higher just because it's a little bit more risky? You're not guaranteeing payment with with property taxes, which are gonna be there.
You know, I'm not sure if if the interest rates are higher just because of it's a revenue bond or not.
You know, it it proved to be a good decision to go that route for the general fund, because we're enjoying the the rental, since the general fund owns the the landfill.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Building and planning.
Good morning, Commissioner Tracy Jackson, Building and Planning. We have two agenda items tomorrow. Both of them are on the consent. The first one is just setting the call for hearing, setting the C-Pacer program. It's the Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy and Resiliency Program. We brought the topic to the board back in February. The board seemed of interest with it. We went, it was suggested to take it to the Building and Planning Advisory Committee. We did that. It's kind of made its way through. We've got all the program forms and stuff ready to go. So we'll be amending the Calhoun County Code 1650, adding the C-Pacer program. We will be the seventh county in the state to adopt the program. We've been working with Doug closely. He's giving lots of advice on different forms and different legalities that we've changed some wording. But hearing will be on July 9th, so we look forward to discussion on that day.
So this will be Ju- July 9th?
July 9th at 9:45.
9:45?
Yep.
Does i- is this the set of rules that forbids the use of natural gas appliances for commercial businesses?
Well, there's some stipulations. This is the, oh, let me grab my little cheat sheet. There's a whole list of things we can do. So it's for eligible properties, privately owned, commercial, agricultural, industrial, multifamily with five units or more that may be owned by any type of business, corporation, individual, or nonprofit. So that's, we were kind of hoping we would get some nonprofit interests with this program. And they're supposed to basically do energy efficiency upgrades to HVACs, renewable renewable energy with solar powers or geothermal heating systems, looking at water conservation with replacing lead pipes with low filter, or excuse me, low flow filters. And then some seismic retrofits can be done. So there's there's kind of a real shallow list of, we've had some interest from a developer inside the city limits of Woodland. And so if we roll this program out countywide, inside and outside, we will be able to utilize this funding or this program for lower funding for them. We don't have any interest in it and we are not the lien holder and we are not the moneymaker. We are just offering this program. It's a way that they can get fun, lower, longer term, lower fixed financing through the state. If they retrofit their buildings to these.
So we just heard from Gina James that we have qualified for some additional document recording fees from the state to address homelessness and the nonprofit agencies that build affordable housing.
Yes.
Could get even more funding if they follow the guidelines in this.
It's not more funding. They could get a, it's a different type of financing. It's longer term with lower interest rates if they do some of these specific items. So it's another way they can tap into this program.
There's certain lenders that will lend on this program and they offer a break in in rate in term to the builder if if they if they're building something that fits this program.
Right.
Using natural gas heating or cooking is a deal killer?
It's not a deal killer.
Not necessarily. I know one contractor that used it down in in Clark County and and I I'd have to verify with him. I'm pretty sure he built a restaurant. He says we use natural gas for that.
I believe you're correct. Yep, on the Vancouver waterfront.
Yeah.
And that's the person of interest that's of interested in this program here to is currently building in the city limits of Woodland. So I'm encouraging, if if the board approves this, we will hopefully bring some additional stuff to the county outside city limits. So that's our hope.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just don't want to send the wrong message that we're. And we're supporting those who think natural gases.
No, that's not this program.
Negatory.
And the other, the other agenda item I have from you is just a housekeeping item. It's, we currently have a contract with True Point, excuse me, True Point Solutions. And they're just our kind of behind the scenes if we need some programming pieces that our internal staff cannot do through our Acela permit program. And we were paying bills and the auditor's office needed an end date and a not to exceed. And so we redid the contract. It's in front of you. It's ongoing. It's $165 an hour and it's only as needed. Currently, we're less than, we're using them less than about between $800 and about $1,200 a month, depending on what we have going on. But so we will, we extended it through 2025. I don't think we'll exceed the $37,000, but we just have that out there as a cap in case.
Sounds similar to what George was talking about with the with the psychologists.
It's as needed.
Yeah.
Yep, and we try to do with everything in-house, but.
You had a certain threshold that the auditor needs more.
That, and we'll have to come back for an amendment if the board.
I think when we first agreed to this, you've been able to make some improvements that have been pretty.
We've made a lot of improvements.
I've heard it through B-PAC and other places, but it sounds like there's been good things.
We've made some great strides forward. We've got a lot more to go, but we are. We're moving the line forward, yes.
When you say a lot more to go, are you talking about you've identified what features you want in Excela?
Yes.
Package?
Not so much Excela, but what we want to put out there for the public to view. So we're trying to get an interactive map, so anyone can click on the county map and see what's going on at what location at any point in time. We're currently working on that behind the scenes. We're also working on automatically getting the documents. Once they are complete, finished, the trigger words finalized to go into the Laserfish system behind the scenes without having too much hiccups. So we're on the last, we're about ready to go live with that. So we are trying.
And that's what you would ask these people to do, True Point?
They have been working with us on that. We just use very limited hours with them, their availability, and then just as our staff has time to roll new items out.
And we use Excela and EHU?
They do, yes.
And you folks do chat about?
All the time, yes.
Why is it only 37,500?
Because we have an internal staff that also does some of the legwork. So we don't use this company unless we have to, unless it's beyond their the current employee scope.
That sounds interesting. So your staff is capable in part of doing some stuff and then you get the mavens from True Point?
Correct.
So your staff is educating itself on how to do these things?
We're trying.
Good, okay, thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
I saw Corrections, were they one of the ones online? Marin, online? Here she comes, okay. Okay, Marin, there you are.
Hi, good morning. I was switching over, so I'm not sure. I might have missed a little bit. Marin Fox, Director of Corrections. Tomorrow, we have a request for proposals on for our food service here at the jail. We also provide food at the Juvenile Detention Center, so this is a request for proposal for both. Both facilities. We're required to go out to bid more frequently because of the juvenile component, because we have to follow school guidelines.
So is it, is this like a year contract, two-year contract, or what do you?
I, Chris Moses deals with this directly and he's out of the office today. I I might, it might be a three-year. We're tied to the juvenile requirements. That's.
Okay, whatever they require.
The length, yep.
So this is just starting over again. We've we've done the automatic renewals and it's time to.
That's correct. Yep, going out to bid for, we've had the same company for quite a few years, but going out to bid to look at other companies as well, if they're interested.
Great.
Okay.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
IT? Did I? Oh, Public Works, sorry. I skipped right over you, Mike. My apologies. I just scratched you right out.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mike Moss, Public Services Director. We have three items on the agenda tomorrow. Items four, five, and six. Number four is a contract execution with Compass Construction for a cross-covert replacement on Clement River Road at milepost 2.04. This is actually was a bid awarded with you guys at a Tuesday meeting on May 21st with our county engineer. So this is just the contract execution. I'm getting a lot of feedback, sorry.
We we turned the volume up, Mike, because one of us doesn't have hearing aids today. That's why it sounds more live.
Not a problem. The number five is another contract execution with Lakeside Industries for a total amount of 2.121 million dollars. This is also a bid award with you guys on a Tuesday with the county engineer on June 20, June 4th. Uh, this is also a bid award with you guys on a Tuesday with the county engineer on June twenty, June fourth of this year. Uh, each year we, of course, we do overlay, uh, this year's the winner was Lakeside. Contract execution is usually the second part of our process with you guys. We do the bid award first and the contract execution second. So, uh, both those were put on the consent agenda for that purpose.
So Mike, as I was reviewing the, the material on the culvert replacement, it occurred to me that this is not the typical fish barrier removal. It's literally a culvert replacement because it's not a fish bearing stream.
Correct. Yeah. And Roger Mowers here, also a county engineer who's working on this project. If you have some details, want some details. It's currently at a, a pretty much a ninety across the road, uh, the way the placement is right. We're moving it more of a forty-five degree angle to get away from a wall. Uh, it, and it comes out pretty high above the clamor river. So I don't know if it's actually fish bearing or not.
Right.
So report, repeat for Roger since he's not up to the mic. It is not a fish.
We don't do barrier removals for a hundred thousand dollars.
No, we don't. You're exactly right. Yeah. And we tried one of these last year with our own crews. We, we did a, a color replacement, very similar area. We ran into so much rock on that area. It, it took us quite a lot longer internally than we anticipated. So we went ahead and bid this one out this year. And the third item we have is a bid award to specialized pavement markings for our striping project for countywide. Along with the city of Calama and the city of Woodland have joined with us this year. So the total amount is seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, which is about seven hundred and twenty thousand is the county share. And twenty-seven thousand is the city of Calama and about eighteen thousand is the city of Woodland. Um, this is, this year, this number is high. It's close to our engineers estimate, but each year this has been increasing to the point that during the budget cycle, we're probably going to come to you guys with the number to maybe, uh, doing this in-house. The piece of equipment is quite expensive, but we're gonna, we think initial numbers show that we're gonna be able to pay that back, pay it off in two, two and a half years. Um, plus we'd work at our own schedule. Right now we do a third party. They kind of condense their season because they have a lot of other places. They only got so many months they can stripe roads. Uh, so it's a challenge for us maybe get our roads swept and ready to go after chip seal and after, uh, overlaid to get ready for the striping behind it. Um, we're looking at now, initial number is about seven to eight hundred thousand dollars for a species of equipment. Uh, but we're spending, just a few years back, it was in the four hundred thousand dollar range for, uh, our third party to stripe our roads. And it's already gone up to the, close to over seven hundred thousand dollars.
And I know some are, well, I can speak to, to once, I've heard them, they're delaying because it's getting so expensive.
Correct. Yes.
Cost of the paint as well as getting it put on.
And certain counties have already gone that direction of doing it themselves. Lewis County, Clark County. Uh, we're reaching out to them. I've, I've reached out to them to see exactly what type of equipment they've got. The city of Longview has recently gone that direction also. Uh, so unfortunately, uh, these third parties are starting to price themselves out of being able to work with, with the counties.
Well, I'm sure it's bringing it back in-house. I'm sure we used to do it.
We did.
The old fashioned way.
Years ago and then, and then we partnered with Lewis County. Lewis County used to stripe our roads for quite a few years, but they, they just ran out of time to be able to assist us. And that's when we started going to a third party.
Okay.
Just like I said.
Is that, I was just kind of wondering if you, you have a machine? Can two counties share a machine type thing?
It's really.
Probably all in the same season, right?
Correct. Yes. Yeah. Because we're in the middle of oil rocking now. Um, so we really start striping at the end of July, first of August. And you really need to get done, try to get done before school starts. So you really have a good six-week window to maybe stripe your roads. And I'm sure every, you know, most counties are in the same boat as we are. So.
Yeah.
But we'll make sure we, the numbers look right before we bring it to you this fall during budget time. This is a specialized piece of equipment. So we had talked about O and M on it, uh, who, who runs it? Um, you still have paint supplies. Inventory. I, I, I know we talked to a couple of counties already that said they, they run their full program with more miles for, than us with their own equipment. And they're in the three to three fifty range per year of, so we're thinking, if we're saving four hundred thousand a year, it only takes us a couple of years to pay that equipment off. So, so we'll bring you more details, but this last year, last year, I think it was in the seven hundred thousand range. This year's seven twenty. Um, I said, it's just, it's increasing. The last couple of years have been pretty stagnant in that seven hundred thousand range, which is still too high for us.
We'd rather use that money for chip sealing, right?
Exactly right. And overlay. Yeah. We have a lot of areas that pop this year, including Space Age, uh, intersection or off I five, there at exit fifty-two. Of course, we always overlay on Headquarters Road. Um, there's, uh, there's always roads. Rose Valley had some issues this last couple of winters. So we, we, we have areas that we need to overlay. Just, just not chip seal. Chip seal maintains the road, but certain times when they pop, like they did this last couple of winters when we had some water underneath, uh, we had some issues in spots that only require us to grind it down and re, repave.
I came through some of your oil rock tour this morning or Kelso.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's been going really well. We changed oil this year, um, with a quicker hardener in it, a faster. And so it, it actually, it, it, it goes, dries so quick for us so far that we're actually brushing and brooming and, uh, sweeping the next day.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. And, and, and our, our trucks aren't really picking up a lot of material during the, the process. Our dump trucks usually when they're pulling away uh, from the paver or the distributor, there's usually just tons of oil rock coming off their tires. And this year's not like that. So, uh, it, it plugs up your nozzle a little bit faster. So we're, we're doing a little more maintenance on our equipment that way, but it's, it's better for the citizens and for us to drive faster.
That, that's interesting because I could see it was late and I was driving over it following the, the, you know, the lead truck.
Yeah.
And you're right. I didn't, you can usually feel it on your tires.
Right.
And stuff. I hate it on my motorcycle, but on my tire. And then I got up to the oil truck and the guy was working on a nozzle.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. Something new we trying this year, just to hold down complaints. And it's better for us to drive faster. We get out there, sweep the roads quicker. Because that's usually the number one complaint we get in the offices. You know, you, you, you oil rocked last week. You have a swept by road. Because usually it takes three or four passings of the roads to get all the rock off of them. And this year that it dry and and that, we're able to actually use less rock because of that. And, and, um, it's better for motorcycles, people in cars, everything. So it's hopefully we'll get less complaints coming in. And also a better, better road, I think, when it's all said and done. When we, I drove the roads last week, they looked really, really good. So we're happy with that.
Mike, you mentioned the space age, um, development at, up above, uh, Toodle Park, creating some extra burden.
Yeah.
I know that, um, uh, with tha- that development and with Lexington School being built, those are projects that we reviewed for impact. Did those impacts get underestimated by county staff or have they come in pretty much what we expected?
I'd say by underestimated.
Okay.
Yeah. Especially the space age one. That truck, I don't think people realize the truck traffic that was coming off the freeway there.
Yeah.
I, I, I would have not guessed it would get the kind of truck traffic it.
Yeah.
It, it has, but it, it's in.
Certainly met a need that.
Yeah.
And you can really tell it's there because if you drive any further, Barnes Drive, just, you know, hundred yards past their exit on either side to the state, it, it's, it's not there.
You can see the difference in it. And you're, it's not going to end because they're putting more, more spikes. There's just going to be more and more there. That, that whole thing's going to be.
And we, uh, we've, we gra- uh, did our own work initially after winter, just to get some of those potholes fixed. And it's a bear to work there because there's so much traffic coming off. We're flagging it with our own crew. Um, and you have to pre, but one minute you gotta let people through because it'd be backing up on the freeway. There's that much truck traffic coming off of there. So it's really hard to actually work at that intersection. I'm sure Lakeside will be doing that, uh, after hours. Our crew is working during the middle of the day on a weekday. So it was, it was tough.
I, I, I remain curious as to congestion problems in Lexington since the school was put in and, and of course additional apartments, just mean there's just more people in that whole urban area.
Correct.
Is there, uh, something coming down the pike that we're going to have to deal with or, uh, did the?
I had to go through.
They, they, you know, they, they adjusted the median strip. They were, you know, telephone poles right in the middle of the road. So.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I had. It, it's, it's just one of those things. It's really hard to anticipate the, the, the traffic congestion. Whether it's West Side Highway, which isn't really our concern, except that it is. And, and then all the connecting roads that, uh, I always thought it was a weird place to put a school for access, but they had the property.
They understand. Yeah. So we'll visit with the county engineer, you know, when Susan's back in town to see if she has any thoughts for the future, what we need to do at, for traffic flow out there. We, uh, like you said, the media with the telephone poles there, I remember how we had to even work with certain barriers and certain height of barriers to protect those poles, but you know, just, you know, shoehorn that thing in out there. It's challenging. We, we have a few, you know, issues with ADA and some neighbors talking about how, how many more crosswalks are needed, uh, lit, lit crosswalks. Um, so, and there's concerns from the citizens that live out there and drive out there.
And of, of course, there is a possibility of bus service being more permanent, depending on the, how the vote goes. So
Yeah.
that adds a little, little extra element.
Yeah.
If they want it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Now I T. Sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Travis Fiskini.
Travis?
I'm sorry?
Is the green light on?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
How about now? Is that better?
There you go.
Great. Good morning. Travis Fiskini, IT Director.
Welcome aboard.
Monday. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
All right. I have two items that I'm going to be bringing to, um, tomorrow, um, for purchase approval. One of them is a software license renewal for Laserfish. It's in the amount of fifty-three thousand. And that's software that we've been using for many years. Um, it's within budget. It's used by all departments throughout the county. Um, and we'd like to renew that software that expires soon. We're a little bit behind the curve. So trying to expedite that.
What's the cost increase from last year?
I'm sorry. I don't remember. Mike, do you remember that? I don't know if you heard that. Mike confirmed it's three percent. Or two thousand dollars.
If you slide over this way, you give room for, and we switch you on microphones.
Any questions about that one?
That one being?
The Laserfish.
Uh, yeah, actually, how did we, how does that compare to last year and that kind of perspective?
Yes, it's approximately two thousand dollars more than last year. And it's about a three percent increase. The license, the cost increase is zero. So we actually increasing quantity of licenses so that we can use, uh, or license additional users, uh, who are going to be, um, accessing forms that were not previously accessed.
So this is just simply the, the licensing agreement that has, doesn't have anything to do with modification or programming of Laserfish?
Correct. It's strictly licensing.
That's a lot of money.
All right. Okay. Okay. The second one is Cisco switches that are meant to replace fourteen switches throughout the county buildings. So there's roughly, um, four dozen or so switches. Um, and this is the start of the replacement for those switches that are, um, aged, end of life. Um, the failure rate's increasing. We've previously purchased four switches of the same model and had good success with them. We're now asking for approval to purchase fourteen more switches of this model. And we're going to replace them in key, um, locations. Future switch replacements would come in following years. These switches, um, were not currently budgeted. There'll be a budget amendment, um, and they'll be included in there. And the funds are available as I understand it.
They're in the reserves?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sure Kathy can elaborate.
So we have about four dozen in total and fourteen this year. So roughly a four-year project to get them all updated?
I, I can't say at the moment. I don't think we've determined whether or not we're going to replace, um, more of them or whether we're going to do a linear, you know, fourteen per year sort of thing. I think it's T B, TBD at the moment. We may find that if the failure rate continues to increase rapidly or we have a security issue because they're not currently eligible for security updates, we may find that we need to, uh, replace them sooner.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And the, Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. This is an item that we set aside each year. Um, replacement, um, in the I T reserve fund. And so this is what we've been anticipating to have to replace switches and putting money aside every year to be able to do that.
So the quote from Blue Ally, that's just one of the many respondents to to the proposal for, or the purchase of fourteen switches?
I don't know to, um, I don't know what other respondents there have been or to how many, but I can check on that. Get back to you on it tomorrow.
Okay. And, uh, do you know how long it'll take before we'll, we will have these, have these come in?
Um, typically it's, um, four weeks or so.
Okay. So it's not horrendous. We, with the COVID, you have to ask because you never know whether, yeah, you're buying it today to be delivered next year.
Yeah, understood. Supply chain issues during COVID were excessive and sometimes it was almost impossible. I've seen that, um, to get the switches or equipment that you require. I don't think that's the case with these switches.
Is Blue Ally the, the wholesaler or the manufacturer of the switch?
They're the, they're the, um, reseller.
The reseller. Okay.
So Cisco is the manufacturer of the switch. They're replacing switches that we sometimes refer to as Maraki. Maraki, when we purchased them, was probably a separate company and has since been acquired by Cisco. Um, so effectively we're replacing some Cisco switches with other Cisco switches. I may not have stated it earlier, but just for clarity, these switches are approximately eight years old. The vendor no longer issues security updates. Um, they're effectively end of life. You can't buy a support contract, um, and have them replace them if they fail, that sort of thing.
So is that on all four dozen?
That's correct.
So we're at fourteen. Is that a, a budget thing or a manpower thing for doing it?
Currently it's a manpower thing. Yeah. If we ordered all of them, we feel like it might take an excessive amount of time to replace them. So it doesn't make sense to spend the money now and let them age. So instead we'll, we'll reevaluate that after we implement the first fourteen.
Okay.
Oh, there you are. I'm good.
I think we're good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have any? Anybody else from agenda? We, we have, uh, so at eleven, we'll have H R in. If we have, do we have any, uh, public comments or anything else miscellaneous before then? Or we take a short recess till eleven? Okay. Seeing none, we will recess till eleven. We'll, when we have H R in. Okay. Thank you.
When we have HR in. Okay, thank you. Okay, back from recess. Uh, you got uh HR?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jessica Warren, Human Resources. I have one request this morning from the Sheriff's Office. It's a request for overlap of a position at the employees retiring and records. And they would like to hire somebody and have some overlap with her.
Hi, David Handy here from the Sheriff's Office. Basically, what we're looking at is we have a thirty-year-plus employee dedicated to service to the county. Will be enjoying a well-deserved retirement. Uh this person will no longer be on property. As I have it written down here, we got too many notes here. Uh as of uh seven twenty twenty-four, she'll be done, but she's going to run out of vacation through nine thirty twenty-four. So what we'd like to ask for the board's approval, if they're willing, is to have a two-month overlap in hiring. We currently have with this person leaving, we'll have three open records positions. So this two-month hiring will for wages and benefits will be fourteen thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars. With our vacant positions, we can more than cover that in salary savings, so there'll be no effect upon the budget with respect to. Asking for more money from the board. We. Hiring these positions, as I've told the board before, it's it's kind of a rather lengthy process. We open applications for submission. They complete a skills test. And then we have a rather lengthy background. No matter how hard we try, it just takes time to these backgrounds because it's a pretty in-depth background. They're subject to a number of requirements. And then we have to these positions. Names or lists, once they're scored and interviewers. Our Civil Service Commission essentially ratifies the hiring list. Some challenges with these positions. In addition to the background and the timeline is the shift where we'll get a significant number of applications. But when the time comes, there's a lot of people that don't like to work the twenty-four-seven shift. And weekends, reality sets in when we kind of explain to them what the what the job entails. So by asking for these two months overlap, we'd like and also another challenge is the labor market, even though the economy is kind of slowing. There's still a lot of jobs out there, so we need to move fast on this. And while we're doing this. Current hiring batch, we'd like to add this third position with this two-month overlap, so that's basically what we're asking.
Yeah. Your your records area is much different than I think people. Normally associated records.
It's a correct. It's it's a critical process and they.
Lot more responsibility and stuff with.
Juggle a lot a lot of balls in there. They do a lot of different things or a lot of hats.
You may not even get them through the process before she's gone.
That's correct. We're like the last new folks we had were about a six-month training footprint with. We took a different approach and um. Have these people so they can function doing public records requests because that's where we needed to help the most. So if we look at an abbreviated footprint, we'll just maybe focus on not doing that, but bring in the public records training after they're hired and you get some skills with. You know, the the normal stuff, warrants, protection orders.
Yeah.
Our spillman system. So to fully train up somebody, you I mean, obviously, they get a lot of on-the-job experience, but which can take years, but it's it's a six-to-eight-month footprint to. Be proficient in all aspects of the job.
I'm good with it.
I don't have a problem.
Yeah. That sounds fine.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Commissioners, that's the only request I had today.
Oh, well. Okay. Appreciate it. Uh miscellaneous, because he. The records request uh prompted a conversation I had with Bailey. Since you remember when we we changed that system around a little bit and we were hoping to. More efficient and just to have a more central point, and we've gone from you gave me numbers on turnaround time? I'll have her share this with you because we always want to know if what we've done is is looking like it's made some improvements, and I think this stat is one that indicates that we maybe are in the right right path here.
So what I had shared with Rick was that in twenty twenty-three, it took us an average of twenty-eight days to close a request. The state average reported by agencies is thirteen. And as of the first six months of this year, it's been ten. So.
You're talking independent of that that.
Right, right. I'm just the record resource.
Right.
The, yeah. So we've we've gone from where it was a twenty-eight-day period to get them out. To down to ten this first six months of this year, and the state average is fourteen. So. Initial stuff tells us that we've probably moved in the right direction on that, so.
And I also think it's important to note, too, and I know that Julie in Sheriff's is experiencing an overall increase in the amount of requests that we receive on a, you know, daily basis in twenty twenty-three. For our side of things, not including records and Sheriff's Office, we had received two hundred and sixty-five. And so far in twenty twenty-four, we've received four hundred and twenty-six. So that's like a sixty percent. Increase in the amount of requests that we've received.
Okay. Okay, that was just a tidbit. Yeah. I don't suppose you know whether that increase is characteristic of an election year?
I think our Elections Department has only received maybe two requests so far. I think our Elections Department has only received maybe two requests so far this year, but that might change the more of it.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else? Oh, as long as you brought the topic up and, and we've got public records request issues there, that's tied in with retention. Any progress to report there?
Last week, I made live for all county employees the retention training that was required for part of our policy that we put into place in December.
Okay, you're gonna have to crank that up or talk a little louder, please. I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Now I can hear you.
So last, well, that's very loud. So last week, I made live the retention training for all county employees. So that was a big task that I had been working on the first, the last couple of months, so that, everybody got assigned that last week. So that was a big thing, and then I'm working on a checklist to go through with the departments. So that's my next task.
Have we gotten anything from the individual leads in, in their areas about doc, about the policy? We're, we're trying to get a policy out, right? And you've got the bulk of the policy out, but you don't have the individual department input, as I recall.
Yeah, I believe the policy states that, you know, departments are responsible for establishing their own policies and that sort of thing. So I don't think that would be like a board policy, but more of like a procedure from the department's end, was my understanding.
Right, they're responsible for identifying the kinds of data that, or documents they have. And I, I would guess that you haven't seen anything on that.
No.
That's a stumbling block.
Yeah, and I go into that in the checklist, you know, what kind of records do you have, where are they held? Are they permanent retention? Do you have a process in place if they're not permanent retention? So I have all those questions. I have a checklist for like, we're starting here, and then also a yearly one that will be implemented after, that has different questions, like moving forward.
And the main policy handles how you hand, if it's this kind of a document, you'll destroy it on this date or, you know, something like that. And who does all of that? Who's the final arbiter? I can't recall. It's got to be the document owner.
So it's-
IT does it.
So when someone destroys a record, the person signing off on it has to either be one of the coordinators in a department, a department head, or an elected official, and then the public records officer. So it does require the two signatures.
Are we destroying any documents at the moment?
I have not received a destruction log to sign off on. I know that I transferred all of the Commissioners' Office records, which was a little bit different for 2023, to the Archives in January, but we don't destroy any board records.
Well, it is true, though, that we don't have any emails going back to eighteen fifty-five, right?
That is true. And we are meeting every other week about that with IT. Hopefully, trying to figure that out.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Seeing nothing else, we will adjourn till tomorrow morning.